The review of the auditor and hopefully get through the clerk's review as well. And Mr. Clerk, if you could take the roll.
Counselor Broderick?
Here.
Counselor Martin?
Yeah, here.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Here.
Three present.
Could I just comment that was an excellent conducting of the roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I'm impressed by it. We will consider that in our review. But, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a statement as to what took place before time, when we all looked up and saw in the balcony on the third floor Farmer Mayor and President City Councilor, Bill Martin, and I said, "Bill, what are you doing up there?" He said, "Isn't this the auditor's oversight?" So he was oversighting this proceeding, but we told him to come down, so that's good.
Sorry, missed that, Bill.
Quite clever.
All right. So we have gone through much of the auditor's review or the review process and the numerous pages of the accomplishments and things that have been done and consolidation of accounts that we're all aware of. And I believe, it's my recollection, that we got to the point where we thought we were pretty much done and we were looking for an opinion from the solicitor as to how to proceed in terms of wrapping it up and addressing the salary issue, which is a compensation issue, which is typical in a review. So we did get an opinion from the solicitor. Maybe if you could just give us a brief recap of that, Chris, in terms of... I did.
Thanks. One distinction. And according to the opinion pursuant to section 15-76, a tier salary system is established for department heads and confidential employees. Performance-based increases pursuant to the ordinance are based on an annual evaluation by the city manager, except for the positions of city auditor and city clerk, who as appointees of the city council are evaluated by that body. Section 15-76 further provides that evaluation shall be completed by December 1st and any warranted advancement shall become effective January 1st following next year. In the case of the auditor and the city clerk, an evaluation of their performance should be completed by the council by December 1st, 2008, to determine the applicability of advancement for the first of the year. Furthermore, in the case of the auditor, her contract provides that any salary adjustments be in accordance with Chapter 15. The last year, her contract also provides that she and the council shall define goals which they determine necessary for the city, and the council shall further establish a relative priority among those goals, and that said goals shall be reduced to writing. And I understand that that had already been completed in the case of the city auditor. I also had noted in this that in addition to a performance-based increase, both the auditor and clerk are also entitled to the same annual cost of living increase as afforded to other department heads on July 1st of each year.
Okay, so that's automatic? That's already been done?
That's automatic, and that's already been done.
Okay, all right. That was one of...
And what was it?
It was two and a half percent.
Oh, so are you...
So the grid increased?
Correct.
Right, the grid increased?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, but you didn't receive it automatically in January, did you?
No, no. Just the...
July.
When it went up in July, July 1st, department heads, we went up to two and a half percent. The cost of living.
So you already got a two and a half percent increase in your cost of living?
Correct.
In your salary?
Correct.
And then you're coming before us for another raise?
This is the steps that go through in January.
So you're looking for performance?
Correct.
Right. That's very similar to what happens with respect to department heads. So department heads, for example, this year would receive a 2.5% salary adjustment to the grid and then a, essentially, a performance-based 2.75% increase come January of that year.
Okay. So basically, you've got the cost of living adjustment from 84,951,85 to 87,075.56. And now what's before us is a performance-based increase according to the ordinance, right?
That's right.
Correct.
And again, that evaluation process is normally conducted, as indicated in the opinion, by the city manager, quote, "except for the positions of city auditor and city clerk." The performance for those two positions are to be, performance evaluations are to be conducted by the city council. And that's what would then entitle both the clerk and the auditor to the performance-based 2.75% increase that the other department heads are in contention for.
Now, they already got it, correct?
No. The department heads received a 2.5% increase in July, July 1st, and then the evaluation takes place in the fall. Come January 1st, department heads or other confidential employees may or may not receive, based on evaluation, a 2.75% performance-based increase.
So is it in the budget, though?
It's been budgeted.
So it has been budgeted?
Yeah.
And what happened? This happens every year?
It is by ordinance intended to happen every year by operation of city ordinance. However, there have been years such as last year where there were no adjustments at all, and that is not necessarily unusual. There have been several years in which department heads and confidential employees, as well as the city clerk and the city auditor, including the city manager, where there have been no increases whatsoever, even though the ordinance specifies otherwise.
Because it wasn't budgeted for? Or, I guess that's one...
Actually, I think in all years it had been budgeted because it would be budgeted... I believe the chief financial officer and the manager would have to budget for everything that's required by ordinance. And however, they, that money was never actually expended.
So last year, there was no step increases for anybody?
That's right.
This 2.75. The automatic increase to the grid, did that happen?
No.
So neither one happened last year?
Neither one happened.
For any department head?
For any department head.
Nor for the clerk?
Nor for the clerk.
Nor for the auditor?
Nor for the auditor, nor for the manager, nor for any confidential employees.
Help me to figure this out. If we can figure this out. 7-1, 2007 to 7-1, 2008. Let's take the auditor who made $84,951.85 and with the cost of living increase, you're telling me that you're now getting $87,075.56? Now, let's figure out the math here. Is that an increase of $2,123.71?
Approximately, it's 2.5%.
So on top of this, you want a performance increase, which I believe you deserve it. Don't get me wrong. I didn't know this took place. I didn't know that. Now, I'm asking you, solicitor O'Connor, many people in the city here that work here, they got a cost of living increase as well, right?
Are you referring to, as far as department heads? Department heads and confidential...
No, not department heads.
Union people?
All city workers.
The, under the collective bargaining agreements, there were increases that were bargained.
Will department heads be entitled to a performance-based increase or bonus?
Yes. Yes, that's what I'm saying. That, right, that department heads, come July 1st, and this has been in place for several years, come July 1st, there is a cost of living increase of 2.5%. All department heads, as well as confidential employees, have received that, as well as the auditor and the city clerk.
And they've already, and they're going to be receiving a performance bonus as well?
All department heads, as well as confidential employees, are eligible for an additional performance-based increase come January, yes, come January of 2.5%, which for, over the course of a year, obviously factored out over the course of a year, would be less than 2.75%.
And they're entitled to receive it, or who decides?
It's not an automatic. It's a review by the manager. But in the case of the city auditor and in the case of the city clerk, the manager doesn't perform the evaluation.
I understand that.
So that's the only difference.
When would we know if the department heads got it or if they don't get it? When is that going to be decided?
I'm not sure. Actually, the manager could probably...
So this is only given to, this performance-based bonus to department heads, not every city employee, right?
It's not every city employee. It's department heads as well as confidential employees. So, for example, in the law department, there are many people other than department heads that would receive the, that are part of, that are ordinance employees, including the people in the front office, workers comp.
You know, I know I'm going to be ridiculed by what I say. I want to give you the world. I know that our city clerk and our city auditor are the best. As far as the performance, you deserve the best. I couldn't think of anybody else I'd prefer here but you two. There's no doubt about that. And I would be willing to have given you another $2,300 or whatever. It's, because I know that Rick wants to go to the next level and the next step, and you really deserve it, and I know that Cheryl does as well, but you, I don't know how I can justify that when you're telling me that you just received a 2.5% increase, which was your cost of living increase, and then on top of it, we're going to move you up another step. I don't know what to say with that. I'd have to reserve my opinion at the time of the city council meeting. Other than that...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, it's my understanding it's in the budget. So, I mean, again, we did vote the budget. In fact, Counselor Rita Mercia made the motion to approve the budget. So it's in the budget. And again, you can certainly refrain from commenting this evening and obviously waiting till the full council, but it is in the budget. That's my understanding, that it is in the budget.
Yes, go ahead.
And I can appreciate the, you know, it looks like a double hit here. However, we're talking about people that haven't had any increase now for two years, which isn't the same for other city employees, right? There were, unionized personnel had an increase the prior year when the manager and essentially management personnel
Right.
Had none.
Right. And last year was, again, not the first year that that had happened. I believe there have been several years in which department heads, confidential employees, and as well as the clerk and the auditor and the manager have gone without, whether it's the current manager or even the past manager, John Cox, where there has been no increases and no advancement.
Also, this, you folks have been here longer than I have, but it's my understanding that the ordinance employees, and our ordinance employees, department heads and whatnot, is a bargain thing to come out of a union
Right.
And set up the ordinance grid so that there'd be, the city would get the benefit of not having a union to deal with and negotiate with, and the ordinance employees would have the benefit of a set grid, you know, raise or some evaluation process where they would be, again, there have been situations last year where nobody got a raise up. Well, the unions did, I believe, 1% last year? I think we just voted on these. But halfway through, which is, right, so half a percent for the year?
That's right. So for a year, it was, it amounted to it.
The first year is one, you know, half, but this year, they started the percent up. And this year, the unions are at 2 and 2, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Two, what do you mean, 2 and 2?
2 in July, 2 in...
So that annualized, that's 3, right?
Right.
Annualized, that's 3%.
And again, annualized, the 2.75% come January
1 and 3/8.
For the auditor or the clerk is not an actual 2.75% increase over the course of a year. It's half, it's half of that.
Right. And if you add in the 1% last year for the unions that they got, it's about...
So annualized, this is more than 3, slightly more than 3?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
But you're right. That's exactly how this apparently came about. That there had been a union in, which included department heads and I believe other employees. I don't know if they were deemed confidential employees at the time. And the, there was a voluntary abandonment of union protection for these employees, and in its place was the ordinance that is before you. And that's what I meant in terms of it had been, this has been in place for quite some time. It goes all the way back to the Colma, which was the name of the union, dissolving and being replaced by ordinance employees. And since that time, there have been other employees that have become ordinance employees.
Well, I just, to try and put it on paper to get, to take a look at it. If we're talking about the two and a half, which was given already, and we're talking about, or looking at 2.75, which would be effective January 1st, it's really 1.375, correct?
That's correct.
And if you take that and annualize it, we're looking at 3.875, which would be slightly less than what the unions got in the past. If you're looking at a two-year, you got...
Right.
Not counting the half a percent last year. It's a full 1% this year, plus the 3%, which will put them at 4. So it's, I mean, I don't know if, you can't merely do an exact science here, but it certainly, to me, looks like it's equivalent, you know, annualized this year relative to, I guess you could add the half a percent from last year, they're really at 4 and 1/2 for the last two years.
It's 2-2, right?
It's 2-2.
So effective 3.
Plus 3.
Plus a half, so it's 3 and 1/2.
But they get the 1 for the...
Plus the 1.
Plus the 1.
1 for half a year, right? Which could be a half, right?
Okay, yeah, so, all right.
But I guess, you know, I'm comfortable with it. I think that, you know, performance-wise, it's the, you know, to finish up, I guess my part of it, the, I think the auditor's done a tremendous job bringing the accounts in order and cleaning things up, going back reconciling the schools and dusting off boxes, upon boxes of documents stored wherever. I don't want to know where you found them, but I'd have to say you've done a tremendous job, Cheryl, and, you know, certainly, performance-wise, you deserve it. And it is in the budget. I understand Counsel, you know, Rita Mercia's position, that it's difficult, you know, when times are tough to, you know, go and give raises. But I, you know, in looking at the numbers, it, to me, it looks like it's in line. I mean, very, very closely in line with what the unions, I think all unions got the same, what all the other employees have gotten. You forewent a raise last year, you didn't get one, and we appreciate that. So I would support the bump up to the next step. We got them highlighted here, so the bump up in the ordinance to the next step. But that's my position.
Could I, if I could, I guess as to the evaluation process itself, the substance of the evaluation, I guess first with the auditor, I agree that there's been a lot that's been accomplished here in a short period of time, and overall, I have to say, very pleased with your performance. I think these goals that you have outlined here are right in line. You know, I would add to that, I guess, formalize all procedures and streamline cash reconciliations. I'd say consolidating accounts, which I know is ongoing, so I applaud your efforts there. And I would just add to that to keep trying to reduce the reportable findings in the management letter. And as to the clerk, again, I think that performance has been very good as well. I think there've been, you know, I think we've made great strides in the city overall as far as making information more available to the public. And I know on your third goal here for the future, you want to continue to improve and advance as technology advances, and I would just want to say I encourage that. I think, you know, the more, I know we have an ongoing process with the city code of ordinances, and I think the more information that can be posted on the website, I think the more professional we look, I think it looks better for citizens. I think it looks better for people coming in from outside the city, whether they be new businesses or people who are looking to locate here. They, a lot of times, that's the first place they go now. You know, you used to go to a city and take a look around, but before you even get there, you might go to the website of the city or the local chamber of commerce or links from hotels. So I think we have made great strides there, and I would, and I think there's still more to do, and we'd encourage your efforts in that area. So I don't really have much in the way of criticism. I do think it's admirable that folks have gone two years without a, without an increase. And so I would recommend that we go to the next step for the auditor and for the clerk, that we skip a step only because one step up is only going to be an increase of about $215, and I don't, I really think that's, you know, more of an insult than a raise. So that's, those are my feelings, that when the time comes, I'll make the proper motion.
Okay. By way of procedure, should we take also, besides the compensation, a vote on that, is, should we also take a vote on accepting the goals, you know, and adding perhaps the reportable findings, reducing it, you know, or keeping it a minimum? Should we do, do we need to?
Right, I think for the auditor
The auditor for the contract?
You should have a vote to accept the goals before the entire body. And, and yes, you can add whatever, whatever other goals. And for the city clerk, you could, you could essentially, you know, rely on the evaluation form that's set forth in the ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I know because we have a contract with the auditor, that it might be a little different. I guess I probably should comment that, Clerk, I think you've done a good job. I know you've started to, you know, the process of updating and emailing, and I know that people have made comments now that they can find the agenda online on Fridays, which is nice. I think in the past, I've had to wait till Sunday, I'm not sure, but many days later to find it, so it's, it's nice to see that you've got the clerk's office moving forward, and people appreciate it. I mean, I know I see people that say, "Oh, this is great. I know what's on," and sometimes before I do, but that's all right. I think that that's commendable, and I know, I appreciate getting the stuff by email. It cuts down time for me and scheduling process, so I think that, you know, keep it, keep it moving along. And Counsel Mercy?
I have no comments until the full council.
Okay. All right.
All right, well, let me, I would make a motion first that we accept the goals as outlined in the auditor's memo dated September 9, 2008, as the goals for the upcoming year, with the caveat that a provision be added to reduce, to the extent possible, the reportable findings that we have outstanding in the management letter.
I'll second that.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a vote, yes? Okay, that's the first issue. Now, before we move on, is somebody going to put this in the form of updated in writing so we can maybe get it to the council to look at, to vote at the next meeting?
Was it appropriate to come in a recommendation from this subcommittee?
But it probably makes sense. Well, no, I'm sorry. This document here, if we could update it with the reportable findings and get it to the council ahead of time, because we don't want a situation where they're looking at it the first time on a Tuesday night. That's all. Whether it goes out this week or in the packet, so that everybody has an opportunity to read it and see if there's anything else, you know, if any of the councils want to add anything, but that's all. It's clarification to make sure that it's, everybody gets enough time ahead before the meeting. Okay. Did you have another motion?
Yeah, I can appreciate Counsel Mercy's position, but I don't know that there's going to be any new information I need, so I would make a motion that this subcommittee recommend to the full council that the auditor go from, I guess, tier 2, step 5, to tier 2, step 6, and that the clerk go from tier 3, step 7, to tier 2, step 2. I guess I could do them separately if there's any... So, all right, so why don't we do the auditor first? So that she would go from tier 2, step 5, to tier 2, step 6. That would be a recommended 2.75 performance-based salary increase. I'd make that as a motion.
Okay, Counsel Mercy's abstaining, so I will second. I guess we'll do a roll call.
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Abstain.
Two yeas, one abstention.
And I would also further move, Mr. Chairman, that the city clerk's salary be increased from tier 3, step 7, to tier 2, step 2, for, would essentially amount to approximately a 3% performance-based increase.
Okay. Again, I'll second that. Roll call?
Counselor Broderick?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Rita Mercia?
Abstain.
Two yeas, one abstention. If I could just share a little bit on the salary, and I can't speak for the city manager, but it's my understanding, Counselor, that when he negotiated the contracts with all the different bargaining units, that the percentages, given the fact that everyone would receive an increase, would be the same within, you know, micro points. So in other words, all the bargaining units are very close to the percentages that the department heads would receive based upon favorable evaluations. Again, I can't speak for the city manager. I know that that may be a source of some of your discomfort. In other words, I think your discomfort is that you didn't want to see certain department heads get an increase of X amount while bargaining units are getting this percentage.
If I could explain my discomfort, I'm thinking about how gracious I am to have a job and how gracious would be if I got a cost of living increase, which I probably do, there's no doubt about it. And in my particular line of work, a young woman has gone off to have a baby, and I'm doing not only my own work, I'm doing her work as well. I'm not getting any more for it. I'm not getting a performance bonus. I'm not getting anything extra. I'm just grateful to have a job. Are you doing a great job? Absolutely. You do deserve a raise. You do deserve a cost of living increase, and you got it. You deserve a bonus, but I don't know if we can afford everything that everybody wants. I want a Lincoln Continental, and I can't get it, so I have to go along with what I have. Does not mean any disrespect. I admire the two yeas immensely, no doubt about that. I'm going to say the same thing at the city council meeting. I may be the only one. The vote may be 8 to 1. I really don't care. I can only go by what I feel. I can only go by the senior citizens that call me and say, "Yeah, I got a cost of living too. It was 1 point of 1% of 1/10 of 1%," and they're on social security. I have to feel for the whole city. There are people that are going to look down and write articles and say, "Shame on you." Yes, they will, but I'm the one that made this decision. It has nothing to do with either one of you. I think you're remarkable. I'd love to give you more. We had a time when we couldn't take raises. I understand that. And to say, "I haven't had a raise in two years," well, you have a cost of living raise, haven't you? I mean, that's not a lot, but it's, I mean, it's $1,000 or $2,000 that other people don't have. Not everybody gets a cost of living increase, and so to sit here and go along with this, I'd love to. I think it's budgeted. It's budgeted. Is it always going to be budgeted? Where does it end? I don't know when it, where it ends. If you didn't have this cost of living increase, and you are exempt from that, and you are strictly relying on us with a bonus step increase, you would have got it. I would have gave it to you. There's no doubt about it. But I can't give you something that you've already gotten a cost of, if you didn't, I'd be here saying, "Yes, absolutely. You deserve something." You deserve a bonus. Don't even get me wrong. I just can't afford it. And you know why? Because when I get paid and I have things that break in the house and I'm all alone, I have to fix it, and I'm not going to get any cost of living to adjust, to fix the things that I have to do. And I'm not meaning any disrespect. Please know that I care about the two yeas very, very much. You probably will get your raise. Congratulations, but I can't do it. I'm sorry. And that's how I feel, and you know how much I care about the both yeas. It's not any disrespect. But I hear from a different segment of the city. I hear the calls where the people lost their husband and they're crying because I hear the calls where the people lost their husband and they're crying because they can't afford this, and gas is high and heat is high and da-da-da-da, and now they trashed me. And now I'm going to say, I'm going to give them a raise on top, a bonus on top of a cost of living increase. I can't, I can't do it in all honesty. And I'm very, very sorry about that. I am. Please forgive me, but I have to do it.
Anybody else?
Just want to, what I'd like to make sure is that somehow this is listed on the agenda for the meeting so that we don't have a situation where other, you know, this gets presented as a subcommittee report and other counselors will say, I had no idea this was going to take place tonight. So I think we should have an agenda item that's listed, you know, as complete evaluation for the city clerk and city auditor, or something to that effect.
Right in the subcommittee report section.
I could either put it under unfinished business, which essentially the auditor's evaluation is, was unfinished business. Or I could list it under subcommittee reports, I can put right next to it.
That's fine. That's fine, as long as it's somewhere. I think it's fine to be in the subcommittee reports.
And if we could get to the goals that we're going to adopt and maybe updated, and also the, a copy of the step that we just reviewed, okay? And perhaps even if you're going to have the minutes of the meeting attached so everybody has an opportunity to look and say, okay, this was the motion, this is what they're looking to do or recommending, so that everybody knows what the numbers are so we don't have a situation where someone thinks that it's just a raise and then they find out there's a cost of living also. And basically, we're trying to eliminate any confusion so that we can get at it and see where it falls.
I'd just like to remind the members of the subcommittee that I am not going to be at the next full council meeting. Again, if you want to go forward, that's fine, but again, I certainly would like to be in a position to be there to vote, but I am going to be out of town at the next full meeting.
I mean, I don't have a problem if we-
Yeah, I don't mind waiting till the following meeting if-
We do that on-
So it'll be the first meeting in October then.
Okay. I don't have a problem.
No, I don't need that.
I don't think anyone will mind.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for letting us know. Is that it?
Don't do it again.
That's all I have.
Let's take a motion adjourn?
Motion adjourn?
Yes, thank you.
Second?
Let's go back up to the balcony and resume oversight.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you.